Call to order, Town of Fairfield's zoning Board of Appeals, July 7, 2022. We have a few items on our executive session that need attention. The first is approval of minutes from our Thursday, May 26, 2022, special meeting. Entertained a motion to approve those minutes.
Brian moves.
Thank you, Brian. Sir, a second?
Harold, seconds.
Thank you, Harold. Is there any discussion?
I just have one note on, under Continued Docket. It's paragraph three.
Oh, that's on the next one. That's on the June 2.
Oh, is it?
That's the June 2.
Wow, I apologize.
This is a special session with Congress, Street and Reading Road.
You're right, okay, I apologize.
Okay. Any other discussion? All right. Hearing none, to bring it to all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? None, motion carries. Second item is approval of minutes for Thursday, June 2, 2022. Entertained a motion to approve?
Brian moves.
Brian, sir, a second?
Please.
Thank you, Jane. Discussion?
Right, here's where I want to point out a small typo. It's under General Docket, let's see, Continued Docket number three, third paragraph. It should say corner, not comer.
Okay. Any other discussion? I think that's acceptable, make that change. All in favor with approving the minutes with that change? Say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? None, motion carries as a change with that correction. And third item is approval of secretary's fees. Entertained a motion to approve?
So will.
Thank you, Brian. Sir, a second?
Second.
Thank you, Lee. Any discussion? Hearing none, to bring it to a vote, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? None, motion carries. It will reconvene our working session after we complete the public hearing on the matters that are going forward today. And now I can move right into our public hearing. The call to order, Town of Fairfield's zoning Board of Appeals, public hearing for July 7, 2022. When a matter is called, I'm going to be making the call and it's going to be basically state, well, it is going to be, basically, it is stating what is on our agenda, because that is how the item appears on our docket. And after I'm done, at that point, the applicant or his or her agent, you go up to the podium and you can begin your presentation. During your presentation, I emphasize only during your presentation, is the time for you to submit anything you want us to consider, whether it's petitions, photographs, if you need for things to be put up that have already been filed, they've been put up on the screen, ask Mr. Decker, he'll do that for you. But if anything that you don't have already on file, or if you just want to show us something, you could do that, but only during. After the applicant's presentation, I will then invite anyone who's interested in that particular application to come forward and speak. I will first ask if there's anyone in favor of the application. Then I will allow anyone who opposes the application to come up and speak. They go in that order. Anyone who does come forward and wants to be heard on a particular application, you go to the podium, you give your name and address, and you state your position, whether it's in favor, why, explain your position, why you're against it, if you're against it, and, you know, and then you can sit down. Please make sure that your comments are on the issue for us, the zoning Board of Appeals, which is a request for all of these, for some variance of our zoning regulations. If there's anyone that opposes a particular application, I will then allow the applicant or his or her agent to speak in direct response to that opposition. If you're an applicant and there's someone opposes it, please, that's a time for you to rebut, address, or comment on the opposition. It's not a time for you to restate your entire application. This meeting is being taped, and that's required by state law. That's why I said early on, please don't interrupt me while I'm making the call, and please don't interrupt anyone else who is up there presenting, don't interrupt the board members who are asking questions at the end of a presentation. We need to be able to understand the tape later if an issue comes up and someone wants to appeal, and that's required by law, so I want to make sure that the tape is clear for anyone who's interested. Only one person can speak at a time, and anyone, like I said, anyone who does come to the, up to the podium, speak into the microphone, give your name and address. Welcome the comments of anyone who's interested in application. The board, we want to hear anyone who's interested, whether you're in favor or against it. However, if you're too far off the point, I reserve my right as chairman to restrict your comments at any time. Applicants and interested people, you can remain in attendance after the public hearing. It may take a short break for the board members to stretch their legs, and we'll come back and we'll return to our working executive session. At that time, we will vote on every single application that goes forward today. If it goes forward, if I hit my gavel at the end of the presentation, that has closed the hearing, and we will be voting on that today. There are five voting members for the zoning Board of Appeals. In order for your application to be granted, you need a supermajority. You need four, at least four. If you have a simple majority, three to two in favor, your application has been denied. If you cannot stay afterwards, and the only interruption I allow is a fellow board member kicking me under the table, but who's sitting in the vice chair seat, but that's fine. But if you can't stay, please call the zoning office tomorrow and you can find out what happened. But I think it's very important, anyone who's interested, obviously the applicant's interested, but I think it's very important for everyone to stay, especially on your application, but even if you have an interest that's opposite to that application, because we're going to have some discussion. We may not have much discussion, but if we do have discussion, I think it'd be very helpful, anyone who has an interest in that particular application, to stay and find out why we decided way we did or voted the way we did. An application for waiver, if it's granted, it's not going to be valid until it's recorded in the land records. Therefore, you must send or bring a check in the amount of $60 made out to the Town of Fairfield and bring or send it to the zoning office when they're later following the meeting, which will allow for proper recording of the notice. Any waiver of our regulations which involves construction, whether it's a new dwelling, an addition, all in operation, will require an ASBIL right before the issuance of a certificate of zoning compliance and a certificate of occupancy. Our first matter that we have is on our Continued Docket, and this is number 12. It is 888 Oldfield Road, map 232, parcel 162, petition of 888 Oldfield Road for a variance of the zoning regulations, section 5.1.1, to increase the number of dwelling units from two, proposing six, permission to construct three, two-family dwellings with CAM application, premises B zone. Attorney Fallon, this is yours.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Good afternoon, for the record. My name is John Fallon. I'm pleased to be here representing the applicant, 888 Oldfield Road LLC. Joining us versally is Mr. Chris Coco, as you can see from the screen, who is the managing member of the LLC. Also with me here in person is our site engineer, Ms. Jeff Gordon of Cota Spody and Associates. Background here, as laid out in my Schedule B, on September 28, 2001, the Town Plan and Zoning Commission approved a 10-unit residential development for this property made pursuant to Connecticut General Statute 8-30G, an affordable housing application. I can tell you, at that time, a number, and this is all part of the P&amp;Z record, maybe 14, 15, 16 neighbors were all represented by Attorney Green. I don't know if he's in the meeting today, although I obviously have worked with him and did advise him of this meeting going forward. As a result of those conversations, we were able to come to an agreement, working with Mr. Green, with his clients at least, and if you look at the 10-unit approval, there are a number of stipulations relative to landscaping and other factors that were made part of that record and made a condition of the approval. Subsequently to the approval, however, an appeal by another resident was taken to buy this decision. I reference that in my material. It's Bochanis versus Town Plan and Zoning Commission of the Town of Fairfield. I see from the screen that Mr. Bochanis is also in the meeting today. In an effort to resolve the appeal, we entered into discussions with the plaintiff regarding the pending appeal, and also we incorporate into this discussions with the surrounding neighbors, represented by Mr. Green, Mr. Thomas Felderman, also one of the neighbors played a primary role in those discussions. As a result of these discussions, and as a means of resolving all outstanding issues involving the appeal generally, the applicant and the plaintiff entered into an agreement where we would revise our proposal and reduce the total number of units to six. And that is what's before you here today, so that we have now gone from a 10-unit approval to one that seeks approval, as the call indicates, of six units of housing. Let me talk a little bit about the property. 888 Oldfield Road is a significant and uniquely oversized parcel in the Residence B Zone. As you, ladies and gentlemen, know, in the Residence B Zone, you'd need 6,000 square feet for a single-family house and 9,000 square feet for a two-family house. This lot has 30,931 square feet. Thus, based upon the unique size of the parcel, it has sufficient lot area to accommodate six homes. That would be three two-family dwellings. We're here to request so that we can put this matter to rest for our benefit, for hopefully Mr. Bochanis's benefit, and for the neighbors' benefit, a variance of section 5.1.1 to reduce the allowable number of dwelling units from 10 to six. We're also seeking a CAM approval here, although you should know that the 8-30G proposal that went before TPZ also received a CAM approval after review by the engineering department and so on and so forth. So this application, technically, there is a CAM application here, but it obviously gets reduced in scope in terms of impervious area and the like. We're very proud of where this thing has come out. The new residences as proposed, attractively designed by Jim Jamison, local architect, I think have a very positive aesthetic impact with regard to the property and the surrounding area. It's new construction. If you want to see the quality of the work that Mr. Coco and his firm does, there is a development right now up on the corner of Oldfield and Reef Road, which this board played a good role in in helping us get the variances there that we needed after cooperation with our neighbors. That's nearing completion. We're very proud of it. It shows the quality of the work that is done. We do agree, after hindsight being 2020 and things working the way they do, that the proposal that's before you today is aesthetically and functionally more pleasing than would be the construction of the 10-unit development that's been already approved by the TPZ. The end result, if you grant the variance, will be the construction of six beautifully designed homes on a lot which has more than sufficient lot area to accommodate that density of dwellings. The proposal obviously will comply in all other respects with all other requirements of the zone, meaning coverage, FAR, setbacks, and the like. So let me briefly talk about the legal standards, which I know this board is quite familiar with. You have to find that what we're proposing is not going to adversely affect the comprehensive zoning plan and that there are elements of fact with regard to the property that constitute hardship as the law would define it. With regard to the first aspect of the test, I cite in my material the Egan case. The Egan case says that if the use that could be made of the property is a permitted one in the zone, then in fact, the first part of the test is met. This property, being uniquely large, having over 30,000 square feet, has the lot area to accommodate 9,000, has to accommodate the density, the six units of housing that we seek here. The use of property in this zone for residential purposes is extremely attractive, is permitted, I should say, and the design, as I think the support of our neighbors indicates, is aesthetically pleasing and is going to have a positive impact on the neighborhood. New construction of the type, which is up the street, can, will accommodate, I think, a nice utilization of this property benefiting the neighborhood. The hardship requirement is just basically what we've talked about a number of times already. This parcel is in a zone where 6,000 square feet is the minimum, 9,000 for a two-family. We have 30,931 square feet, and in that regard, it is that uniqueness of the lot area that I think establishes a proper basis for a finding of hardship here. And this whole thing is about creating a less dense, attractive development that will take the place of the previously approved 10-unit 8-30G, and this is very much in keeping with the input that we received, not only from Mr. Bochanis on behalf of his, I should say, his wife is the actual plaintiff here, but also the surrounding neighborhood residents. And we're going to facilitate a settlement that we think benefits all parties. So we'd be pleased to answer any questions you might have. Gordon's here, should you have any technical questions? But we hope you'll approve this and we can move forward. Obviously, the plans include significant provisions for landscaping, many of those carried over from the previous agreement with the neighbors that were memorialized in the P&amp;Z approval of the 8-30G application. But we have reached out to all of them, and to the best of our knowledge, there is a unanimity of support here for this reduced in scope development. Be pleased to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you, Attorney Fallon. Board, have any questions? Jane, yeah?
I'm a little confused. The existing property is 30,000 square feet?
30,931 square feet.
Okay, and if you need 9,000 square feet for a two-family house?
9,1827, so theoretically, you could have six units of housing based upon the lot area.
Right, so what, I don't know why you need a variance, I don't understand.
Because I don't have the ability to create a subdivision for that purpose, because of that, so I've got to keep the lot intact. But the point I was trying to make is, from a standpoint of density volume, it's not inconsistent with the standards of the record.
So when it was 10 units with affordable housing, how many of those units were actually affordable?
Thirty percent, so it would have been three.
So there would have been seven market rates?
And three affordable.
That's a 9 to 6 market rate.
Correct.
But no affordable.
Correct. Correct.
That's the application.
That's the application.
Right, thank you.
And I don't, I think there's a great commitment on the part of this applicant and on the town, of the town and this board to affordable housing, but in this case, I think the neighborhood correctly perceives that the six-unit density without the affordable standard is more compatible with their neighborhood.
Couldn't you just designate one of these six as a affordable housing unit?
But then I wouldn't have, it wouldn't be fiscally, it wouldn't be, we wouldn't be able to do what we're doing now for the neighbors, because the numbers just wouldn't cleanse properly for that.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions, Harold?
No.
Is any of the land impacted by wetlands?
No. The, 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 hi. No, the original application was carefully reviewed, as was this one. There's no, in wetlands jurisdiction, which is back to the problem.
Thank you. Any other questions? All right, hearing no other questions. Is there anyone that wishes to speak in favor of the application in the room presently? What about remotely? Okay. Who's that raising their hand? I see no name.
One of the neighbors that lives on Oldfield, and Mr. Fallon referred to me earlier. We are very much in support of the revised plan to have six residential units that are for sale units, more in keeping with other, mostly two-family buildings that are on our section of Oldfield, as you probably know. Mr. Fallon also noted that in the earlier meetings with the other plan, there were some additional items that we had requested that were entered into the record that time. I just would like to add that he and I had a conversation regarding this new plan and asked that the landscaping buffer on the west side of the property also be a robust plan that three neighbors that are on the corner of Geneva Terrace will have some buffer between them and the new development, and in our phone conversation, Mr. Fallon agreed that they would do that.
Yeah, that's correct.
All right, I'll get back to them in a second. I just wanted to see, is there anyone else that wishes to speak in favor of the application? Okay, I have a question on that, Attorney Fallon. Was there an agreement and something that can, your client would agree as a condition of that, and what is the verbiage that you agreed with Mr. Felderman on?
The answer is yes, that was agreed to, and as he, Mr. Coco is here on virtually as well, but what he cited is correct, that we would do a robust landscaping plan on the westerly boundary to enhance screening with regard to those people. Did I say that correctly, Mr. Felderman?
Yes.
Thank you. And that could be made a condition.
I'm skeptical of the word robust. Is there a plan that can refer to? Because robust is open to a lot of interpretation.
I don't believe, Mr. Coco, are you still on the line? Are you still in the meeting?
I am, John, I am. How are you?
That's Mr. Chris Coco.
Hi, Chris Coco, for the record. Yes, I had included a plan originally in the original design, but additionally, this is the first I'm hearing, but we can certainly get some additional screening as we did on the southern portion, which we agreed to, so which would accommodate that for sure.
Well, Mr. Coco, can I, can I say, as the chairman, if I entertain the motion to approve this, that a condition agreed to by the applicant is a landscaping plan consistent with the landscaping plan submitted to Planning and Zoning?
On the, for the southerly property line.
For the southerly property line.
For, just to be implemented on the westerly, on the westerly property.
And this is on the, so southerly and westerly?
Right.
That would be fine.
That's fine with you? Right, and Mr. Felderman, I think that correctly articulates our discussions?
It does, yes.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Agreed, thank you.
Sorry, thank you for that clarification. Anyone else in favor of the application? Is there anyone in opposition to the application locally here, present? What about remote signing in? Do you know if Attorney Bochanis is coming?
I've spoken.
Okay. All right. Do we know if anyone, because they're all muted, did they un?
They have the ability to unmute themselves.
Okay, all right, fair enough. Hearing none, no other opposition, and thank you for the clarification on landscaping plan. I'm going to close the hearing on 888 Oldfield Road.
Thank you very much.
Okay, next on our Continued Docket is number nine, 250 Pequot Avenue. That's been continued to August. On our Continued Docket number 13, 319 Harbor Road, has been withdrawn. General Docket, first matter, we're taking this up, is 50 Bay Edge Court, map 130, parcel 13A, is an apple, petition of Andrew Yu for a variance of zoning regulations, section 5.2.4.3, to reduce the rear setback for an accessory structure from four feet, proposing zero feet, and section 5.2.5, to increase lot coverage from 20%, currently 22.8%, proposing 23.4% permission to construct a dock and a walkway, premises A zone. Mr. Yu, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. My name's Andrew Yu, I'm the owner of Fifth Bay Edge Court. So I have a permit from the DEP and the Department of Energy and Labor to build a 1040 dock, so that's already been approved. I need a small variance to build some steps in the, just a walkway to access the fixed pier. So when I started the project, and I had it surveyed on, I was within variance, but then, one year later, after I had done all the plans and I had the overlay, I was told that I lost 635 suite of coverage due to the zoning law change, that I couldn't build anything over 4.8 feet. The variance I'm requiring is 53 square feet, representing 0.6% variance over that, and I've reduced the actual height of the dock to minimize the actual footprint that I can have, so done as much as I can to do that. So I'm just really asking for permission to build that little step and that structure for the remaining part of the dock. That's really all I require.
All right, thank you, Mr. Yu.
And I have here the, sort of, a couple letters of report from the neighbors that have, which I will distribute to the members and give them review, and in here, I've overlayed the position of where they situate, so hopefully that supports that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, and then I have the originals, which I think you, one of them is the original. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Mr. Yu. The board, have any questions for Mr. Yu? Go ahead, Jane.
Is the property line on the west side the high tide line?
The, it's, I think it's probably, I can't.
High water?
High watermark, yes, extends out, and I think that's the piece from the edge of the riprap to the first pillars of the expanse that variance I require.
Okay, thanks, and, okay, thank you.
Any other questions in the board? Okay, hearing no other questions. Is there anyone that wishes to speak in favor of the application, present in the room or remotely? Please let us know. Is there anyone that wishes to speak in opposition to this matter, 50 Bay Edge Court, either in the room or remotely? Please let us know. Hearing no comments one way or the other. Thank you, Mr. Yu. We're going to close the hearing on 50 Bay Edge Court.
Thank you very much.
The next item on the agenda is number two, and that is 91 Quincy Street, map 138, parcel 196A, is an apple, petition of Nicholas and Jessica Maniero for a variance of the zoning regulations, section 5.2.5, to increase lot coverage from 20%, currently 25.5%, proposing 25.4% permission to construct a rear deck with stairs, premises A zone. All right, is this, Mr. Provinzano?
Yes, it is.
All right, go ahead, sir.
Good afternoon, so this is.
And thank you very much for waiting until I was talking.
Yes, we're just looking to construct an 11-by-14 deck off the kitchen and family room, come raising the house, so the loss through a little patio. That is pretty much it.
And we have sent the petition for three of the neighbors signed here. Pass that down, that'll be part of the record. Board, have any questions for Mr. Provinzano?
This is an overall reduction in coverage, because you're taking something away?
No, we're increasing, we just shifted an addition over to the left, putting that, trying to propose a deck off the kitchen and family room.
Because the application, or the, what I'm reading is it's now at 25.5 and you want it to be at 25.4, which is less.
So it is less, okay.
That's, that's what it says.
Okay.
Yeah. Yeah.
All right, any other questions?
Nope.
All right. Is there anyone that wishes to speak in favor of the application, 91 Quincy Street, here or remotely? Please let us know. Is there anyone in opposition to 91 Quincy Street in the room, Town Hall, or remotely? Please let us know. Okay, hearing none. Going to close the hearing on 91 Quincy Street. Thank you, Mr. Provinzano.
Thank you, have a great day.
Next item on our General Docket, which is number three, 288 Roland Road, that has been continued to August. Next item is number four, which we will have business on, it's 281 Penfield Road, map 139, parcel 184, petition of Kim Whalen for a variance of zoning regulations, section 5.2.5, to increase lot coverage from 20%, currently 25.7%, proposing 26% permission to construct an elevated platform for a generator, premises A zone. All right, sir, could you give us your name?
Pete Mizuko. I'm not the homeowner.
I could tell that, because you don't look like a Kim.
Yes, thank you. We're just looking for a variance for, to put the standby generator. She's over slightly on her lot coverage.
And did your client talk to the neighbors and see?
We tried.
They had any?
We tried, yes.
And it's on the side with the And it's on the side with the LLC that owns the property, based upon the map and survey. All right, does the board have any questions for Mr. Mizuko? Hearing no questions. Is there anyone that wishes to speak in favor of the application, two eighty-one Penfield Road, here at town hall or remotely? Is there anyone in opposition to two eighty-one Penfield Road, this application, here or remotely? All right, hearing none, going to close the hearing on two eighty-one Penfield Road. Thank you, Mr. Mizuko.
Thank you.
Number five, one fifty-seven Old Stratfield Road, map four two, parcel one three five, petition of Denek Turzin for variance of the zoning regulations, section five point two point five, to increase total floor area from fifty percent, currently thirty-five point seven percent, proposing fifty-three point nine percent, permission to construct a new two-story, single-family dwelling, premises B zone. All right, sir?
Good afternoon, Mr. Member, Mr. Chairman, all the members. I would like to just say that my lot, like so many others in our neighborhood, is not conforming in lot size, lot square, and lot frontage, and what we propose, that we are complying, what I'm complying, it's, you know, basically we're complying with all zoning regulations except that the floor area, so that's where I'm seeking my variance. All neighbors signed everything, everyone approved on my end, so that's pretty much all I--
And you're Mr.--
I'm the homeowner, correct, yes.
All right, did I pronounce it correctly?
Correct.
Okay, all right.
Not bad for--
Okay, you can correct me if I miss your name. All right, and I see that you're adjusting the existing to move the house back four square.
Yes, sir, absolutely, but the house, it was, actually built anyway, so.
All right, board have any questions? Mr. Turzin, go ahead.
Hi, was this a, like a pre-designed set of drawings for a kid's house, or is this specifically designed to this property?
Well, specifically designed for this, for this property. My wife actually designed it, really, and I, so--
And why couldn't it have been designed to be compliant? Why couldn't it have been--
Just re-adding extra bedroom for our kids, so what I really want to do is to have each kid have their own bedrooms. So as you're looking at the, if you're looking at the second floor--
Yes.
There's a, there's a three bedrooms for the kids' pot master--
Yes.
And that's our goal, to accomplish, so each kid has their--
But there's nothing preventing you from taking, you know, making it just a little smaller?
Um, it would be much smaller, yeah, much smaller, they would have to be obviously much more, much more smaller.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions, Mr. Turzin? All right, hearing no other questions. Is there anyone that wishes to speak in favor of the application, one fifty-seven Old Stratfield Road, either here at town hall or remotely? Is there anyone in opposition to one fifty-seven Old Stratfield Road, here at town hall or Okay, hearing no other comments, I'm going to close the hearing on one fifty-seven Old Stratfield Road. Thank you, sir.
Take those to show.
Our next item that we have is number six, one zero eight zero South Pine Creek Road, map two three two, parcel one seven two, petition of Michael and Julian Salati for a variance of zoning regulations, section five point two point four, to reduce the second street line setback on a corner lot from thirty feet, currently seven feet, proposing seven feet, permission to construct a second floor addition over existing garage, premises R three zone. And do we have someone presenting this remote?
Yeah, no, I'm here.
Oh, oh, okay.
So these are just the signatures.
All right, you're Michael?
I'm Michael.
Okay. Did you, I saw that it was an attorney, is an attorney going to present the application as well?
Yeah, he's up there.
Okay.
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes, I can.
Okay.
Attorney McCann, go ahead.
Good evening, my name is Brian McCann, I'm from the law firm of Pullman Comley. I represent Michael Salati, he is the current owner of ten eighty South Pine Creek Road, and a recent purchaser of the property. By way of background, the property is on the corner of South Pine Creek and Risley Road. The house faces South Pine Creek Road, however, the driveway is off of Risley. Therefore, the current garage, which is attached to the home, is adjacent to Risley As you're aware, this subjects the property to not only the street setback coming off of South Pine Creek, but also a thirty-foot side street setback coming off of Risley Road. A prior owner received a variance in nineteen seventy-eight to reduce that side street setback from thirty to eleven feet, and also to construct an apartment above that attached garage. For some unknown reason, when the garage, apartment, garage and the apartment above were constructed, they were built up to seven feet of the setback, and not the eleven feet that they had requested and received in the variance. The encroachment has long since been legalized pursuant to Connecticut General Statute eight dash thirteen A, structures and setbacks. Now, Mr. Salati wishes to perform some rather significant renovations to the dwelling, including, but not limited to, above the garage. All the renovations will occur on the existing footprint. And the zoning department, and the reason why we're here is the zoning department has concluded that the renovations above the garage will require variance, so while they are on the existing footprint, while they are within the existing encroachment, they are above the garage in the area between that eleven and seven feet that was, that I had previously mentioned are legalized pursuant to eight dash thirteen A. So that brings us before you. I'll also add that the proposed construction will stay below the maximum allowable height, and Mr. Salati has appropriately and prudently approached and communicated with, at least in writing, if not in person, almost all of the neighbors, if not all of the neighbors, and he has received consent from, I believe, almost all of the neighbors, so that's really And maybe Michael can, I'm going to throw it over to Michael now, maybe he could kind of give you just a little bit of flavor of what he's proposing as far as the actual construction of the dwelling.
Yeah, so right now the garage, it's dormered, as like the attic is dormered, so my proposal is to take the garage down and rebuild the garage again on the existing footprint, but put a full second story, so full height walls on the second floor, and then a new roof line, again, it's going to be taller than what's there now, but well under the maximum allowable height. I think it's also important to note is, Matt and I have been talking back and forth over the last couple of weeks, and the flood maps have changed over the past couple of years, and so as part of the kind of deal going into this, I have to bring this house up to flood compliance level, so I'll be filling in the basement, and right now all the mechanicals are housed in the basement, and so those need to move, so as part of the plans, the new mechanical closet is in the garage, which will house all the mechanicals, obviously, but that like extra four feet that will give me will allow me to still use a car in that garage, which would be great.
Let me just also add a little bit regarding the, and I know you have a copy, the board members have a copy, but the, I've attached a hardship narrative, excuse me, in which I've referenced the nineteen fifty-six subdivision, and I've attached the map. You could see Mr. Salati's lot is denoted as Lot Three in this subdivision, and the setbacks as they relate to this Lot Three, now ten eighty South Pine Creek, whenever that original structure was approved, and approved in an orientation facing South Pine Creek, I think that really created a problem, and I think it created, the reason why I drew all the setbacks on that attached map is just so you could see how that, how that we would face that problem, given the narrow building envelope parallel to Risley Road, and the approval presumably by some zoning department to orient the house towards South Pine Creek really created a problem with that side street setback, and as you can see in the other lots, one, two, four, five, six, seven, eight, they don't, they don't really have that problem, and I believe, well, you could see the similarly situated lot, which is Lot Four, on the other side of Risley Road, has a much wider envelope as it faces South Pine Creek.
All right. Happy to-- Thank you, Attorney McCann. Is there any questions? Thank you, Mrs. Salati. Does the board have any questions for either the Attorney McCann or Mrs. Salati? Jane?
Just so I understand, the existing garage is going to be taken down, and the new construction will be on that same footprint?
Correct, yes.
So the additional percentage of coverage is because of the porch?
Uh, yeah, we actually scrapped the porch, we're not going to add it to in the porch, I know it's on the current plans, but we're actually lowering lot coverage by like three to four percent. Uh, there's a shed, there's a shed that's on the property, we're removing the shed, there's a deck in the back that we're also removing.
Well, it says it's currently thirty-one point one, and you're proposing thirty-four point six, so that's going, that's more.
Uh, I don't, for lot coverage?
Yeah, that's what you're, yeah.
I think building, I think that's building coverage.
Are you looking at the side of the side of Walden?
This is South Pine--
Right on the South Pine Creek.
No, I think that's, yeah, yeah.
I apologize.
That's all right.
I'm looking at the wrong thing. Sorry.
I just, I just want to know, is essentially what we're doing here, legalizing the seven foot?
Pretty much, yes.
That was--
That was built back in seventy--
Still back, sorry, nineteen thirty-nine.
Well, I think--
Connecting to seventy-eight, yeah.
Yeah, I think more appropriately, because I think that is legalized by operation of law.
Okay.
I think what we're doing here, to answer your question, is we are allowing construction above that area to some different degree, well, there is construction above that area, but to some different degree, and possibly even, albeit a larger degree. Like I said, we're staying below the maximum height, but I think there is, correct me if I'm wrong, Michael, there is a two or three foot increase in the roof height.
Yeah, yeah, so what, on the screen now is existing conditions, and there's another page that shows there, right there. So existing conditions are the bottom two dashed lines, and then, yeah, so that's existing right now, and then that will be the new roof height, again, still lower than maximum height coverage, or maximum height.
Any other questions from the board? All right, hearing no other questions. Is there anyone that wishes to speak in favor of the application, ten eighty South Pine Creek Road, either here at town hall or remotely? Is there anyone that wishes to speak in opposition to the application, ten eighty South Pine Creek Road, here at town hall or remotely? All right, hearing none, I'm going to close the hearing now on ten eighty South Pine Creek Road. Thank you, Mrs. Salati, thank you, Attorney McCann.
Thank you, board members.
Next item that we have is number seven, two seventy-five Palding Street, map one eight two, parcel six six, petition of Moira Curran for a variance of zoning regulations, section five point two point five, to increase the lot coverage from thirty percent, currently thirty-one point one percent, proposing thirty-four point six percent, permission to construct a one-story addition in place of existing deck, premises B zone. Mr. Becker, go ahead.
Yes, good afternoon, I'm Michael Becker of Becker Construction in Fairfield, and I'm here representing Ms. Curran today. She purchased this home last fall, and one of, we had met together from a referral, and we started talking about her major wish list item, which was a mudroom, and looking at ways we could put it on the house. Subsequently, this led to us looking at replacing an existing deck on the rear of the house, and so we went forward with planning on using that existing space and creating this closed structure. In a conversation with Matt over a couple of issues with setbacks, we found that the deck was never permitted to begin with, so now it made it an illegal lot, it was already over lot coverage with that deck counted in there. So then, while we were doing the plans for the new mudroom, and we knew we needed to get a variance to get that, you know, get that legalized, that space anyway, we've added a portico on the front, which took up thirty-two square feet of lot, and then also have added a deck coming off the dining room, which is following the same setback line as the proposed mudroom across the back. This is a corner lot in a B zone, so you do have some, what odd, we'll call it, setbacks because of the, of being a corner lot, so what is actually the back is treated as a side setback on there. So it is not terribly far off the back fence, but you will see that we have, I'll have petition for you, every neighbor anywhere, we have, she was very diligent, Ms. Curran was diligent with getting petitions signed, so we have a lot of signatures, people approving it, and also, if you note where the deck is, the prior owner had planted arbor bides six years or so ago, I believe it was, and they are now at least twelve feet tall, so somebody is sitting on the deck, you can't even see the back, the next house right, directly behind them anyway, and everything else is far enough away.
Okay, and you have petitions, you--
I have petitions.
All right, get those in. I think you gave the original to Mr. Becker already?
Yeah.
Two pages worth, she did a good job.
In spite of vacations and a few other things going on with the neighbors, there you are.
Thank you. We like two pages worth of petition.
I'm sorry, I'll stay up for now.
Yes, thank you, just in case there's questions.
Okay.
Does the board have any questions for Mr. Becker?
Just want to clarify, so your hardship is that it's a non-conforming corner lot?
Correct, yes.
Okay, thanks.
All right, any other questions from the board? Okay, is there anyone that wishes to speak in favor of the application, either here at town hall or remotely? Is there anyone that wishes to speak in opposition to the application, two seventy-five Palding Street, either here at town hall or remotely? Okay, hearing no comments one way or the other, we're going to close the hearing on two seventy-five Palding Street. Thank you, Mr. Becker.
Thank you.
The next item that we have is number eight on our docket, and that is ninety-two Pike Road, map one seven seven, parcel eight E is an Edward, petition of Glenn M. and Carol L. Mcno for a variance of zoning regulations, section five point two point five, to increase lot coverage from twenty percent, currently twenty-six point six percent, permission to legitimize a set of stairs, premises A zone. Mr. Mcno?
Yes.
Go ahead, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, thank you, members of the board, for giving me the opportunity to come here and present our request for this additional variance. April first, two thousand twenty-one, we came before this board via Zoom and presented a request to put an addition on our home and enhance our home with a sunroom, and at that time, the board very graciously approved that variance. Sixteen months-- Sixteen months later, we're trying to bring this, this project to closure and all of our licenses or permits have been passed with the various building departments, except this one variance. In essence, what, what occurred is there had to be adjustment on, from a one to three step porch, which required an extra point four lot coverage. The good news is we did not encroach on any of Town of Fairfield's setbacks. But at this point, what we're looking to do is request permission or approval of this additional variance so that we can go through the proper channels to get a certificate of occupancy.
Sir, does anyone have any questions for the Macnells? You'd like to use the steps?
As I get a little older, it's a little longer way to jump now.
All right. Okay, any other questions? All right, let's see if there's anyone that wishes to speak in favor of the application, either here at Town Hall or remotely. Is there anyone that wishes to speak in opposition to the application, either here at Town Hall or remotely? All right, I'm going to close the hearing, ninety-two five road. Thank you, Mr. Macnoe. Next item that we have is number nine, sixty-five Elderberry Lane, map seven seven parcel six four eight H. St. Henry petition of Ryan and Catherine Giassulo for a variance of zoning regulations, section five point two point four to reduce the rear setback from thirty feet, currently twenty-four point five feet, proposing twelve point nine feet and section five point two point five to increase lot coverage from twenty percent, currently seventeen point four percent, proposing twenty-one percent. Permission to construct a rear deck premises A zone. And I don't see your, are you Ryan?
Yes.
All right, go ahead, Ryan.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, board. Just looking to put a deck over the top of what's existing, a blue stone patio, two steps down. We're not looking to extend past any of the existing borders of that patio. Just looking to have something a little bit more elevated, a little bit more enclosed for our family.
All right. And does the board have any questions? Or Mr. Giassulo? Hearing no questions. Is there anyone that wishes to speak in favor of the application, either here in Town Hall or remotely? Is there anyone in opposition to this application, either here at Town Hall or remotely? This is sixty-five Elderberry Lane. Hearing none. I'm going to close the hearing now on sixty-five Elderberry Lane. Thank you, sir. Our next item that we have is number ten, nine three nine Reading Road. That is to be continued to August. And now we have number eleven, two oh nine Alma Drive, map one four seven parcel three three four. Petition of Amy Kim for a variance of zoning regulations, section five point two point four point three to reduce the side setback for an accessory structure from four feet, proposing two feet. And section five point two point five to increase lot coverage from twenty percent, currently twenty percent, proposing twenty-one percent. Permission to construct an elevated FEMA compliant platform for a generator premises A zone. Ms. Kim here, someone for Ms. Kim?
Yes.
Okay.
All right, I just had to use the restroom, so.
Oh, well, perfect timing. You get back in time. Just give us your name.
My name is Alex Lynn. I'm the husband of Amy Kim, my wife. I do have a petition.
Great.
From total surrounding our neighborhood, especially Mr. Gross, which is right next to us where we're planning on putting the generator.
Okay, and do you want to tell us anything more about it, especially?
Yes, the reason why we're placing it there, the way our home is situated, it's a corner lot. And so at first, obviously, we wanted to put it right next to where the electrical outlet and everything comes out. However, that's towards the back of our, in our yard. And we just got a, a nice little puppy and put a fence in. And the gate where we installed the fence, the generator, if we put it, you know, install it right around there, it will be, it will block, yeah, it will obstruct the, it will be literally right in the middle of the, of our backyard. And the reason why is because we have so much, so many windows in the back. And our kitchen and our living space is right there, whereas to the side, there's no window in the first floor. And so we just thought that that was a better situated position to put.
Okay, all right. And I saw that Mr. Gross, the neighbor or the Grosses on, on that side, they signed the petition as well.
Yes, he signed it. And the reason why is because on our, his other side, Aaron, our other neighbor, he has a generator also, but it's right next to their living area and their bedroom and their kitchen, whereas the where, the place that I want to put it in, it's, it's facing, it's right next to their garage. And so it's not gonna be any kind of, he said it's fine.
Thanks, sir. Does the board have any questions? Hearing no questions. Is there anyone that wishes to speak in favor of the application at two oh nine Alma Drive, either here at Town Hall or remote? Is there anyone that has opposition to the application for two oh nine Alma Drive here or remote? Hearing none. I'm going to close the hearing on two oh nine Alma Drive. Thank you very much, sir. Our next item that we have is number twelve, one ninety-three South Benson Road, map one three nine parcel three three two. Petition of Eric West and Dinah Epstein for a variance of zoning regulations, section five point two point four point three to reduce the rear setback for an accessory structure from four feet, currently two feet, proposing one point seven five feet and section five point two point five to increase lot coverage from twenty percent, currently twenty-two point four four percent, proposing twenty-three point seven nine percent. Permission to expand the existing detached garage premises A zone. And do we have, who's presenting, is it remote? Go ahead. Give us your name.
Eric West. My name is Eric West.
All right. Go ahead, Mr. West.
Thank you. So again, my name is Eric West. Myself and my wife, Dinah Epstein, both own our home here at one nine three South Benson. Want to start by pointing out that thanks to your all support this past September, we got approval for, let's say, allowing our entire property to be conforming as is. So thank you again for that. Included in that was granting permission to remove the existing one car detached garage structure and rebuild on the existing foundation. As we walked down the path of continuing to design that exact plan, it made us realize that that simply didn't allow enough, frankly, volume in terms of the ability for us to use that redesigned structure that we wanted it. And so what we would like to do is increase, as mentioned, the existing garage's footprint by four feet into our property. If that's done, that would require, of course, we ask this council's support, in addition to what's already been granted, to decrease the setback for an accessory structure from four currently to up to one, or should be down to one point seven five. Again, decrease of three inches in that one corner point, most close to the backs of our property. If that's allowed, we'd, we'd be looking at then further permission to decrease our lot coverage to enable us to build that larger footprint structure from twenty, currently twenty-two point four, to that twenty-three point seven nine percent. So thank you again for the support and consideration and happy to answer your questions.
Thank you, Mr. West. Does the board have any questions for Mr. West? All right, hearing no questions. Is there anyone that wishes to speak in favor of the application, one ninety-three South Benson Road, either here at Town Hall or remotely? Sneak it back in. All right, we do have a question, Mr. West. Jane, go ahead.
Hi, I'm looking at what you're proposing and it's, it's, you're calling it a garage, but I don't see a garage door at the end of the driveway. Is that correct? Am I reading it properly?
That's correct. Yes, we do not intend to keep it as a garage. It's just an auxiliary structure.
All right, thank you.
Just to make sure, any other questions? Okay, I left off with asking if people in favor of the application. No one spoke up. Is there anyone that opposes the application, one ninety-three South Benson Road, here or remote? Hearing none. I'm going to close the hearing on one ninety-three South Benson Road. Thank you, Mr. West. Our next item that we have is a number thirteen, fifty-six Rugby Road, map two three one parcel nine eight. Petition of fifty-six Rugby Road LLC for a variance of zoning regulations, section five point two point five to increase the lot coverage from thirty percent, currently thirty-two point five percent, proposing thirty-six percent. Permission to construct a rear deck premises B zone. Go ahead, sir. Give us your name.
I'm here representing fifty-six Rugby LLC. My name is Jad Harp with JTH Builders. We are doing the building there. And with the new FEMA compliance, the house had to follow with the flood zone. We had to raise the house about nine feet off the ground. So we are looking to construct a ten by ten deck with no stairs off the back of the house, just to give the family a little bit of outdoor space.
Okay, all right. Thank you, Mr. Harp. Does the board have any questions for Mr. Harp?
This is Harold.
Yeah, go ahead, Harold.
You say you're going to build a deck off of the house that's been raised. So is the deck elevated?
Yes, it'll be about ten feet off the ground, nine six to be exact.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions, Mr. Harp? Hearing no other questions. Is there anyone that wishes to speak in favor of the application, fifty-six Rugby Road? Do you have a question?
Well, I'm looking at the survey. This is Rugby Road. And on the, on the grid on the survey, it says that the the FBR is going up to sixty-five percent. Am I saying, am I reading that correctly?
That's what the, yeah, that's what the proposal says on the grid.
Sixty-five percent.
Yeah.
And if that's not listed in the, no description here. Just talking about lot coverage, not.
Mr. Decker, was that part of the earlier?
No, this house received a variance by this commission a little over a year ago. And that was part of the original variance.
Part of the original.
Sixty-five percent.
Sixty-five percent, correct. You'd also granted a variance for lot coverage at that point. I believe they were over, is there a thirty-six? I think they're at thirty-one?
Thirty-two five.
Thirty-two five. And then they're going up to thirty-six and that's this deck itself. So the FBR has already been granted.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Any other questions? Okay, I left off, people speaking in favor, didn't hear anyone. Is there anyone that wishes to speak in opposition to fifty-six Rugby Road, either here at Town Hall or remotely?
I would. I am the neighbor of fifty-six Rugby Road.
You have to go up there.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Mr. Harvey, you can take a, go to the side.
Move to the side, okay.
Thank you.
Just give us your name once you're up there and your address.
I am Janet Teransky. I am the owner of Forty Rugby Road. I am the neighbor of fifty-six Rugby Road. There has been a lot of issues with the building of fifty-six Rugby Road, which has interfered with my Forty Rugby Road. My concern and the neighborhood's concern is a small house built on a tiny lot that was not aware that there was a first hearing to have that house built on their property, having the deck, not knowing who owns that home, that's our concern, that the deck be utilized. I think it's owned by two people in an LLC. What they're, what they will be doing with it is may concerning to the surrounding neighbors. It then oversees other properties and may create a disturbance in the neighborhood. But it's on, it's a big house on a tiny little lot. I've lived there for sixteen and a half years. And we had a quiet neighborhood. That was a small cottage that was on that home that was turned into then a huge home, which abuts my fence. And there has been property damage that has not been rectified at this point on my property, which I await.
All right. Thank you, Ms. Teransky.
Thank you.
And, oh, Ms. Teransky, where are you located in the?
I'm the corner lot forty, which is on the corner of Rugby and South Pine Creek.
Okay, all right. So not the immediate neighbor, but?
I am the immediate neighbor.
Are you the immediate?
I'm right next to.
Right in here at the corner of South Pine Creek and.
Yes, so I am the first house on the lot, the next house is fifty-six.
All right.
So the house abuts my fence.
Okay, all right. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Anyone else in opposition to the application at fifty-six Rugby Road?
Do I get to rebut?
Yep, I gotta wait for, see if there's anyone else.
Okay.
We want to go back and forth.
Gotcha.
No one else has spoke up. And Mr. Harvey, you get to address what Ms. Teransky said as an immediate neighbor.
I've had a lot of communication with Janet about any issues that have been caused on her property due to the construction. And we actually have a meeting set for Saturday at eleven AM. We will address anything that was damaged during the construction to completely satisfy her needs. As far as the size of the house, I wasn't a part of this. Neither was fifty-six Rugby LLC when it got approved. So we just built what was approved. You know, fifty-six Rugby bought it from the previous owner who went through all the variances and got it approved. So if she wasn't aware of that stuff, neither was I, because I wasn't on board then. And as far as the use of the deck, it's just to give the people outdoor space because we couldn't do anything as far as a patio or anything goes because of drainage issues with the lot being small, as she mentioned. So the use of the deck would just be to be able to go outside, maybe put a grill out there, a table, not, I mean, it's a ten by ten deck. It's very small. By the time you throw a grill out there, you can only have a couple of people on it to be in with. So I don't know if it would be much of a disturbance for the neighborhood.
Mr. Harp, it looks like that deck would be a little bit closer to Ms. Teransky's house than the neighbor, correct?
No, it would be closer to her.
Back of it, yeah.
Her house is a duplex.
Yeah.
She's towards the front of our house. It'd be closer to the, the other half of her structure.
Yeah, I mean, did you ever propose to Ms. Teransky some type of a screening on the deck itself or? And that's, it's too high up to do screening from the ground up, a screening on the deck itself.
Below the deck is sheltered by her fence. If, if the commission wants us to do some kind of high wall, like, you know, we've done those in the past for townhouses to kind of give separation, we're not opposed to it. Whatever gets the deck.
Well, the, the board's not going to put a condition like that on it, but if the applicant speaks to the neighbor like this and comes up with a, something that satisfies both.
Okay.
We always like to do that.
As I mentioned, we're meeting on Saturday. So my, my purpose to meeting her on Saturday is whatever we have to rectify, we will.
This is, this is my suggestion, that you make a request with me to continue this till the next, next hearing. So you do have an opportunity to sit down with Ms. Teransky and maybe that back neighbor to come up with a compromise. Because, you know, I think if you're familiar with the board, you know, we like to allow people to have some outdoor space that they can use.
Correct.
We're also sensitive to the neighbors whenever there's additions that, you know, especially up here when they're higher, you know, if it's just a two-foot deck, okay, that's a little different, but a ten-foot deck is kind of looking down.
Okay.
Into them, so.
Yeah, I'll have a conversation with Janet on Saturday. And then, as far as the person who owns the unit that's attached to her unit, he's been over multiple times, and he hasn't had any opposition to what we wanted to do with the deck.
But she has a right being that it's?
Of course she does, yeah, correct.
So, my suggestion that you request of me, and it would be gladly accepted, a continuance to next, next.
Okay, yeah, please, if we could request a continuance, that would be great.
Grant your request, um, and hopefully you have something that it can be proof of the meeting with Ms. Teransky on Saturday. You can report that at the next, next hearing.
Great, sounds good.
All right.
Thank you.
Uh, number thirteen, 56 Rugby Road is going to be continued to August. So, there's going to be no business on that today, Mr. Teransky. It's continued.
Thank you.
So, you're going to have an opportunity to discuss your concerns with the owner and, and/or Mr. Harp, okay?
Thank you, Attorney.
All right. Um, number fourteen, eight-oh-seven Riverside Drive, map one-three-nine parcel two-six-seven. Petition of Paul Sorbano Junior and Christine Sorbano. Okay, is it Sorbano or Cervano?
It's Cerbono, B-O-N-O.
It was spelled differently, so I want to, in each of the names.
I saw, yeah.
It's still, it's still okay. Uh, for the variance of the zoning regulations, section five-point-two-point-four, to reduce the street line setback from thirty feet, currently twenty-eight-point-two feet, proposing twenty-three-point-one feet. Permission to enclose a portion of the front porch premises A-zone. Uh, Ms. Sorbano, you're presenting this?
I am, yes. Thank you, Mr. Chairman and members of the board. I am the, um, one of the owners of the house, my husband and I. And, um, we have a, um, pre-existing non-conforming lot, um, and we're looking, we have a, a covered front porch. And we're looking to enclose that front porch to give us, um, expanded living space on the first floor.
Okay. Does the board have any questions for Ms. Sorbono? I see that you, you have petitions in your packet for the neighbors signing off as well.
I do.
Ms. Sorbono, yeah, okay. Um, any other questions? All right, uh, open this up. Is anyone that wishes to speak in favor of the application, eight-oh-seven Riverside Drive, either here at Town Hall or remote? Is there anyone that wishes to speak in opposition to this application, eight-oh-seven Riverside Drive, either here at Town Hall or remote? All right, I'm going to close the hearing now on eight-oh-seven Riverside Drive. Matt, thank you very much, Ms. Sorbono.
Thank you.
Next, uh, item that we have is number fifteen, uh, two-forty Henry Street, map one-seven-seven parcel one-six-three. Petition of Taylor and Alyssa Rainey for variance of zoning regulations, section five-point-two-point-four, to reduce the street line setback from thirty feet, currently twenty-four-point-six feet, proposing twenty-four-point-six feet. Permission to construct a second floor addition with attic above premises A-zone. And who is presenting?
Hi, I'm Eric Michaels presenting for them. Can you all hear me?
Yes, we can. Go ahead, Mr. Michaels.
Okay, great. I'm the architect and contractor. This is actually my son's house on Henry Street. There's a pre-existing condition where the house and the front setback, the house is eight inches too close on the right, I'm sorry, the left front corner of the house. And we're going to build a second story directly above the house so that front left corner, when it goes up, would be in the non-conforming area.
Okay, all right. The board have any questions? Go ahead, go ahead, sir. Don't want to cut you off.
I, I have photos, survey, drawings, if you want to see anything, or if you have whatever you need.
We, we have what was filed, um, with part of the application. So, if you want to show us anything, you're, you're welcome to do that, sir.
Okay, let's see. Um, can you see this screen with the survey?
Yes, we can.
Okay. Can you see my mouse moving around it?
Yep.
Okay, great. So, this front left corner, right around here, you can see that it's twenty-nine-point-two feet to that corner right there. And we're going directly above that, the house. Here's floor plans, the existing foundation. The first floor, that's the corner that is presently non-conforming. Second floor goes directly above that corner. And here's the roof and the attic. And it will look like this, and it presently looks like that. I can flip back. I know I went pretty quick, but if you want to see anything.
All right, the board want to see anything further? All right, no, we're good with that?
Okay.
All right, now let's see if we have questions. Board have any questions for Mr. Michaels? All right, um, having no questions. Is there anyone that wishes to speak in favor of the application? Two-forty Henry Street, either here at Town Hall or remote? Is there anyone that has an opposition to this application, uh, two-forty Henry Street, either here or remote? Hearing no comments, one way or the other. I'm going to close the hearing now on two-forty Henry Street. Thank you, Mr. Michaels.
Thank you very much.
Uh, our final item that we have is nineteen-zero-three Post Road, map one-eight-zero parcel one-nine-nine. Petition of nineteen-zero-three Post Road LLC for a variance of the zoning regulations, section thirty-point-two, to reduce the distance between two cafes from one-thousand-five-hundred feet, proposing two-hundred-and-fifty-two feet. Permission to establish a cafe premises DCT zone. Go ahead, sir.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman and Board Members. My name's Robert M. Salisbury. I'm the owner of Isabelle Monceau, the traditional French bakery. Um, our purpose is to legitimize the indoor, uh, indoor patron area for a cafe license. Uh, when the bakery was purchased, it was there, but apparently it had never been approved on the original application. One of the things we're looking to do is to increase our client space. Uh, as a result of the pandemic, we've lost some significant revenue for the past couple of years. We've got people coming out now, and so we're trying to, uh, we're trying to attract more clients to our business.
Board have any questions, Ms. Salisbury? Go ahead.
Hi, so with a cafe inside, does that increase the parking spaces that you're in?
It will not change our parking space availability.
Are you?
We're using the same number of seats that we had previously.
And you're compliant, and even though you share the parking lot with the country next door, everything is what it's supposed to be?
Yes, ma'am.
Any other questions on the board? All right. Hearing no other questions. Is there anyone that wishes to speak in favor of the application, nineteen-zero-three Post Road, uh, either here or remotely?
Attorney Fallon? I haven't done this in a long time, and I've never met Salisbury, but I, as a, not daily, although I'd like to be, um, patron. His store is so friendly, and the quality is unsurpassed, i- i- anywhere that I've ever been. So, I just thought I would rise and just tell you that I hope that this is the absolute type of business that we need to support, foster here in Fairfield. It feels good to stand up here without any legal representation or being paid, so good luck to you.
Thank you, Attorney Fallon. Is there anyone else that wishes to speak in favor of the application, nineteen-zero-three Post Road? All right. Uh, is there anyone that wishes to speak in opposition to nineteen-zero-three Post Road application, either here at Town Hall or remote? All right, hearing, no other comments. I'm going to close the hearing now on nineteen-zero-three Post Road. Thank you. Uh, we're going to take a short break. Although we return, is ten minutes enough?
Yeah.
Everyone? Okay, so we're going to be returning at three-twenty. Call back the order. Uh, Town of Fairfield's zoning board of appeals, July seventh, two thousand and twenty-two. We're going to reconvene our working session. Um, several matters went forward today. Uh, I want to make sure I made a note. Yes, I did, okay. Uh, the, the first item that we have business is on our continued docket, eight-eight-eight Old Field Road. Attorney Fallon presented this, and it is for a variance to increase the number of dwelling units from two to six on this particular property. I'd entertain a motion to approve, approve with the following condition, that the landscaping, uh, plan, uh, landscaping border be installed, uh, on the Sutherley and Westerly border consistent with the plans, landscaping plan that was submitted to planning and zoning on an earlier application. Uh, entertain a motion to approve with that condition.
Brian moves, as long as I don't have to repeat the condition.
No. I'll second.
All right, discussion?
Uh, I think all parties have done their diligence. I think they've come to a reasonable solution. I do wish, uh, that there could have been some affordable housing on the property. I take some exception to that absence, but again, I think the neighborhood has done its diligence and gotten its pound.
Any other discussion?
This is Harold.
Yeah, go ahead.
Um, there, there appear to be from the, from the drawings and the maps that I saw, two other properties with similar construct on them, multi-dwelling, with, uh, they look like townhouses per se. I don't know if anyone else would consider them to be like townhouses, but are they connected contiguous buildings? Or is there separation between the three buildings?
Building units, there's a separation between the three?
There is a separation, okay, just for clarification.
That's a question. So, this, what we're approving is just the concept, not the actual design. So, could they still come back to us with application for a variance? They want to make things a little taller than the regulations permit, or a little wider? Would that have, that would be a separate application?
Had to be a separate application.
Okay.
Uh, I, I find it hard to believe, because they would do that, because we already had an appeal.
Right.
Uh, we had discussions, uh, and Attorney Fallon made a, you know, made a point, one of his selling points, is under coverage and under FAR.
Right.
Because the other, uh, application was considered to be too dense for the neighbors. So, I don't think he's going to come, try to come back to us for making it more dense.
Good.
Than it is now, than as proposed.
Thank you.
Okay, bring it to a vote. I start at my left, Harold. So, you're first.
I vote yes.
Oh, yes, yes.
Is that why you were motioning me? Yes.
Yes.
Thank you.
That's granted. Number nine is on the continued docket, two-fifty Pequot Avenue has been continued. Number thirteen on the continued docket, three-nineteen Harbor Road has been withdrawn. Number one on the general docket, fifty Bay Edge Court, Mr. Yu presented his application to construct dock and walkway uh, at the edge of his property. Uh, entertain a motion to approve.
Brian moves.
Thank you, Brian. Second?
I can second, I'll do.
Elise said second first. Uh, that sounds weird. I'm sorry. Um, discussion?
I think it's a more than reasonable request to access a much larger bit of construction. I think it's a step, and it's a fourth of a percentage point, something to that effect.
Yeah.
He also got?
Three-point-four percent.
He also got approval from the neighbors.
But, you know, just remember, the water levels are rising, so his property is going to get smaller and smaller, so better build it now.
But that's, yeah, that's a risk.
All right, bring it to a vote. Harold?
I vote yes.
Yes, yes.
Yep.
Yes. Number two, ninety-one Quincy Street, um, and this, uh, Mr. Promazano, uh, presented this for his client. Uh, this is to construct the rear deck with stairs. Uh, entertain a motion to approve.
Brian moves.
Is there a second?
Jane seconds.
Thank you, Jane. Um, discussion?
The reduction.
Yeah, they're actually reducing.
They're improving the situation. I almost said it's a reasonable request, but I held that.
Reducing the non-conformity.
And there's also neighbor support there, yeah. All right, bring it to a vote. Harold, yes?
Yes, yes.
Brian?
Yeah.
I say yes. Number three, two-eight-eight Roland Road was continued to August. Number four, two-eight-one Penfield Road. Um, and, um, Mr. Mazuko presented this from his whelan. It's to construct an elevated platform for a generator. Entertain a motion to approve.
Brian moves.
Brian, is there a second?
Harold seconds.
Harold, thank you. All right, discussion?
It's a generator, you know, power there.
Oh, sorry. I don't know how many, I don't know how many generators will be approved. I've been on the board a long time, but, uh, it's not.
I, I meant to ask if this was in the flood zone, because raising the generator would make, make, uh, very?
Yeah, they're, they're part.
We see the compliance to have it raised.
Yeah, Penfield, uh, okay, Penfield Road would be down there.
Yes.
Okay, bring it to a vote. Harold, yes?
Yes, yes.
Yep.
Yes, they can have power. Number five, uh, one-fifty-seven Old Straffiel Road, Mr. Tison, uh, presented his application. Uh, it's to construct a new two-story single-family dwelling. Uh, entertain a motion to approve.
So moves.
Thank you, Brian. Is there a second?
Elise second.
Thank you, Elise. All right, uh, discussion?
Yes, um, this is a brand-new designed house, so there's no reason that it couldn't have been designed to be compliant. But, you know, bigger than the FAR is permitted, and, um, I think it's one of those, just shave a little bit off, sharpen the pencil, and get it within regulations, and you won't need a variance at all.
Um, I think, given the sheer volume of neighborhood support, um, I think they've done more than their diligence to make sure that the neighborhood will be happy with it. Um, I don't think that this would, from looking at it and what I remember, would represent a monstrous house based on the property.
Yeah, they're not seeking lot coverage.
I agree with them.
Just a FAR.
Yep.
Six thousand, and they only have five thousand square feet.
But it's a percentage. I mean, that, that has to do with?
I know.
You know, yeah, I mean, yeah, it's still big, yeah.
But it's not big and wide, it's just big. All right, Harold?
Uh, yes.
Yes, I'm going to say no.
Yep.
Yes, uh, that passes? Okay, number six.
Thank you, everyone.
Ten-eighty South Pine Creek, um, uh, petition of Salati, Attorney McCann, uh, presented this. It's to construct second floor addition over an existing garage. Uh, entertain a motion to approve.
Brian moves.
Thank you, Brian. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Elise. Discussion?
I think based on what they're trying to accomplish and the fact they're building vertically, it's an acceptable use of property.
During the presentation, uh, a photo or drawing was shown with a wraparound porch, and then I believe I heard that porch would not be included. Is that a stipulation? Would, would the wraparound porch affect the, uh, conditions for the building of this property?
It could only affect, uh, a setback, but they're looking for this corner, um, this corner piece, because they're, they're a corner lot. So, they're looking for that. The garage was situated on that. They had eleven, a variance to eleven back in the seventies. And then they built seven. Uh, that got grandfathered in by statute, uh, but now they're tearing it down, you know, newer, newer structure, better compliance code, and they want to be above it, uh, so they want to go back to that seven. So, it's in that, it's, it's for that corner on that other, since it's a corner lot, you have two frontside setbacks.
So, the, the porch does not come into play here, whether it exists or doesn't exist?
If it stays and it's not zoning compliant, uh, then it would be an issue, but, okay, the variance that we're looking at is that corner to do that second story over the garage.
Understood, thank you.
Does it matter that it says in the call, I guess, that it says they're constructing a second floor addition over an existing garage? No.
That doesn't matter on the call.
Doesn't matter on the call.
No, it's, it's.
Okay, it's what's on the plans and what's on the application. If that's the way it says it's on the application. Okay, thank you.
Because frankly, if they just left the garage and just... Because frankly, if, they just left the garage and just topped it off and built the second story instead of raising the garage, they still need to, they still need to, they still need to, for the second floor.
For the second floor, that's it, okay.
All right, bring it to a vote. Harold?
Yes.
Yes, yes.
Yes.
Yes, that passes. Number seven, two seventy-five Polding Street, uh, Ms. Current's application, Mr. Becker presented this, uh, to construct, uh, one-story addition in place of an existing, uh, deck. Entertain a motion to approve.
So moved.
Brian, is there a second?
Yes.
Thank you, Harold. Uh, discussion?
I'm going to say it just once, it's a reasonable request.
I, I just want to point out that the hardship, he says it's a corner lot, that really, I looked at all the other, um, items on the grid, the, um, survey, and it, I mean, it's, the lot is big enough, they're all set, you know, the fact that it's a corner lot doesn't really give a reason why they want this, um, coverage. It doesn't, you know, but nevertheless, um, you know, the neighbors don't care, sometimes they, it's not really the hardship.
She got the entire Town of Fairfield to approve this thing.
I'm just saying, you know, I'm, hardship is critical. We have to raise our decision, though, so if there's no real hardship, I mean, I can have another reason to do it.
All right, bring it to a vote. Harold, yes?
Yes.
Jane?
I say yes.
Yep.
Yes?
Thank you.
Uh, number eight, ninety-two Five Road, uh, petition to the Mcnos. Mr. Mcno presented this, uh, and he wants to legitimize a set of stairs. Uh, entertain a motion to approve.
So moved.
Thank you, Brian, is there a second?
Elise second.
Thank you, Elise, discussion?
I can't make that jump.
I think we should look and walk down the stairs.
I think they're existing, and I think it was a, it's a reasonable error to-
Legitimize.
Legitimize and make right.
I agree.
Bring it to a vote. Harold?
Yes.
Yes, yes.
Yes.
Yes. All right, number nine, sixty-five Elderberry Lane, uh, petition to the Giassulos. Uh, Brian presented this, uh, to construct a rear deck. Entertain a motion to approve.
So moved.
Brian, second?
Elise second.
Thank you, Elise, discussion?
More than one percent. It's a diminutive.
Did you read my paper? I wrote the same word.
Oh, I use that one a lot.
Yeah, uh, Harold, yes?
Yes, yes.
Yes.
Yes. Okay, uh, number ten, uh, two, uh, nine thirty-nine Reading Road has been continued. Number eleven, two oh nine Alma Drive, um, uh, petition for Amy, uh, Kim, her husband presented the application to construct an elevated, uh, generator, and a second generator of the day. Entertain a motion to approve.
So moved.
Brian, is there a second?
Elise will second.
Thank you, Elise, discussion?
It's a generator.
I, and the neighbors approved, so I, I don't think this is any problem.
The neighbor and, uh, he made a good point, it's, it's over to his garage, so it's not going to interfere as, as much. I mean, when they go on, we can, we can hear them when it's quiet, but, you know, it's not going to interfere that much. All right, bring it to a vote. Harold, yes? Elise?
Yes.
Jane?
Yes, yes.
Yes, that's approved. Number twelve, one ninety-three South Benson Road, um, petition of, uh, the West Epstein, uh, uh, group, and Mr. West presented this, and it is a, to expand the existing detached garage. Entertain a motion to approve.
So moved.
Is there a second?
There is, Elise will do it.
Thank you, discussion?
Uh, it was pointed out that there was no garage door, so this is turning the garage into an accessory building. Is that correct?
Well, garages are accessory buildings, when they're not attached.
Okay, so, um-
It could be a garage, a shed, it can't be a stable with animals, um, but we could have a lot of different types of accessory structures.
Feel mice in my garage don't count, huh?
No, no, you can't qualify for a tax break for as a farm, so, no.
Thank you, um, okay.
That is, we do think expanded into their own property, and it doesn't affect the, so, yeah.
Yeah, and they need that, uh, the way it's situated, they need an extra quarter of a foot.
Three inches.
Yeah, it's, well, yeah.
There's a property line, they go straight, it goes to one point seven five on the back. All right, Harold, yes?
Yes, yes, yes.
Yes. Uh, and, uh, number thirteen fifty-six Rugby Road, that was started, uh, but the request was made, uh, to continue it to August. Uh, so that has been continued. Number fourteen, eight oh seven Riverside Drive, um, Sorbano, Sorbonos, uh, Ms. Sorbano presented the application, uh, and, uh, that is to enclose a portion of the front porch. Entertain a motion to approve.
So moved.
Thank you, Brian, is there a second?
Yes.
Harold, second. Thank you, Harold. All right, discussion?
It's a reduction.
No.
Currently twenty-eight, proposing twenty-three.
Yeah, it's, it's not a, it's not a very big ask, and-
Enclosing a structure that's already, that doesn't have walls.
There is also an absence of objection.
Harold, yes?
Yes.
Jane?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Uh, number fifteen, two forty Henry Street, um, uh, Mr. Michael presented this, uh, and, uh, for Taylor and Alyssa Rainey, and it is to construct a second floor addition with attic above. Entertain a motion to approve.
So moved.
Thank you, Brian, is there a second?
Sure, Elise second.
Thank you, Elise. All right, discussion?
Think it's perfectly reasonable request to build vertically above a spot, and it's very, very tiny into the setback.
Eight inches.
Yeah. Wapping, eight inches.
All right, bring us a vote. Harold, yes?
Yes.
Jane?
Yes.
Brian? Say yes. Number sixteen, nineteen oh three Post Road, Mr. Salisbury presented the application for nineteen oh three Post Road LLC, uh, and this is to reduce distance between two cafes, uh, fifteen hundred feet to two hundred and fifty-two feet. Uh, entertain a motion to approve.
So moved.
Thank you, Brian, is there a second?
Gusto.
Jane second.
Thank you, Jane, discussion?
It doesn't affect any parking issues, so, you know, nothing, nothing will change.
It's just, it's just a legitimization of what's there, and you can go inside and feel like I'm not breaking the law.
Making reservation.
Yeah.
All right, we'll bring it to a vote. Harold?
Yes, yes.
Yes.
Yes, that passes. Thank you very much, ladies and gentlemen. See you in August, our closing zoning board of appeals, July seventh, two thousand and twenty-two.